Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, August 11th, 2022 at 6:06 PM. A quorum of the Board are physically present at AIST's central office to conduct this meeting. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound, Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Close captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing, and to our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, and the motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Singh, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
election. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called the dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have five individuals who have signed up to speak in person, and we have 19 who left a recorded message. We will now move to in-person testimony first, and in order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. As you come to the microphone, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. And again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise, that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. We ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, to please show respect for others at all times. And the first speaker tonight is Valerie Turulos, and then we have Candace Hunter, April Clark, Eric Ramos, and Jen Krieger.
My name is Valerie Trure Olson. I'm a parent, AISD alum, and member of the Bond Steering Committee. I'm here tonight to let the trustees know that the community supports equity. I know there are a lot of loud voices asking for a lot of things, and there have been seeds planted that an equity-centered bond is not passable. What you aren't hearing is the silent majority, the families that underserved schools and are allies across town. They're saying a bond that's not centered in equity cannot pass. The package put together by the BSC accomplishes significant reductions in M&amp;O costs while making investments in communities affected by generations of systemic racism, and it positively impacts every school. I'm asking you to find a way to keep it intact. If you can maintain the BSC recommendations and build from there, the bond will keep its commitment to equity. That would be a bond that makes history and a bond that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace?
Good evening. It has not escaped me that this body finds itself between the proverbial rock and a hard place. After giving a charge to the Bond Steering Committee to recommend improvements based not on worst first, as it did in 2017, but on school communities that are most at risk, underserved, and even neglected by our district, juxtaposed with the reality for people of color and those living in poverty of all races, as was pointed out from the dais on Tuesday. There is talk in this bond process of touching more schools and rightsizing schools. It feels like shuffling money and restricting growth, something this district can ill afford to do at this time. At the end of the day, buildings are not the greatest contributor to student outcomes. I get that, but they do make an impact. I am a parent of an eighth grader at Satter Means Young Women's Leadership Academy. Does rightsizing mean disregarding out-of-hand community wishes for expansion six through 12 without engaging authentically with the community? I understand that interest conversion will rule the day, but as you deliberate to the extent that you can, I ask that you be bold. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is April Clark. I'm a parent, a member of the Bond Steering Equity Advisory, and co-chair of the Facilities Long Range Planning Committees. I strongly urge the Board to vote for the BSC-approved bond packages. The schools selected for modernization and upgrades in this bond package were based on locating the communities identified by the Office of Equity as high-opportunity communities. High opportunity because by doing our best to remove the barriers for these communities, we disrupt systems of inequitable practices. We talk a lot in this room about student outcomes, and we ask over and over, what does the data tell us? Why are the same kids falling behind time and time again? The work of the LPC and the recommendations of the Bond Steering Committee recognizes where these communities are and addresses the significant inadequacies at their schools. If we as a district decide that having properly functioning and quality working spaces is important and adds towards positive student and teacher success, then it is critical that we prioritize historically underserved communities. Thank you.
Eric?
All right. So, good evening. I'm going to start off with what seems to be a popular topic right now in Bear Creek, and I want to ask why it keeps getting added back in. It is not the only school that is overcrowded. As of last year, at snapshot, it was over-enrolled by about 45 students, but accepted over 70 transfers. Maybe the issue's there. Maybe we should stop accepting so many transfers if we don't have room for them, rather than investing more money there. As Dr. Foster pointed out, we are seeing interest conversions in action. What does that look like? It looks like taking away about 93 millions out of District 1, 91 million out of District 3, while adding 45 million to District 4, 60 million to District 5, 41 million to District 6, and 32 million to District 7. That is not equity, that is equality. I hope that you can do what is right and take a stand for equity. The district will support equity. So please remember what Martin Luther King said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Thank you.
Thank you. Jen?
Hello. That was not me, but I'm Jen Krieger. Are you ready for me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Jen Krieger. I'm a District 3 resident, former AISD employee, AISD volunteer, and advocate. I urge the Board to call for a bond election that is, one, based on the original $2.25 billion bond package as proposed by the Bond Steering Committee and Long Range Planning Committee, and, two, includes cameras for sped eligible classrooms. I am proud of the work the committees did to design a process and propose bond package that begins to address the past and present disinvestment in our schools that disproportionately serve Black and Brown students. I am deeply disappointed in the administration's recommendation to reallocate funding away from these schools and towards projects at schools that largely serve white and oftentimes more affluent students. The district appears to be doing what it's always done, cater to white and privileged parents. But it doesn't have to be this way. The district can change. We, as a community, can change. You, as a board, can change. This responsibility to change, to know better and do better, falls on those of us with the privilege of benefiting from the default whiteness of our culture and our institutions. When will we see that the young people that we love benefit just as much, if not more, by choosing to invest in the school communities that have fewer financial resources and less social privilege and power? I implore you to honor the committee's wisdom, their time, their love, and their labor. I will do my part to help get the bond passed, will you?
Thank you. We will now play the recorded message for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Hello, Dr. Means and Trustee. My name is Ally Pacata. I'm an AISD parent, and I'm commenting on Agenda Item 4.1. That's the end of this. Trustee Foster said, "That is when the inequity will creep in." His prescient words struck me as I listened to the comments from the trustees representing West Austin during the August 9th Board Work Session. There it was, the inequity easing into the equity-by-design results. The impact of taking money from mostly Black and Brown schools, communities we've marginalized most, to give to mostly privileged schools looks like systemic racism to me. We talk about inequities in AISD often, but, trustees, this is an opportunity to take action, to start to address inequities. I urge you to honor the months of labor and hard work by the Long Range Planning and Bond Steering Committees and support their recommendations in their original form. Thank you.
Kelly Green, Travis Early College High School Fine Arts Instructor. I am proposing that we go with Bond Steering Recommendation and Bond Package B, or that we go with Bond Package B with the amendments presented by the seven of the BBC members at the Board Work Session. I also am in agreeance that we, the City of Austin, will support a bond for schools that serve mostly Black and Brown students, including schools and students on the east Please consider the students that have been left behind for years. If you have not visited these buildings, these campuses, do that. I believe the City of Austin will stand up for what is right. We do not need to cater to those that have more money. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Tannis West. I'm the mother of two children who attend AISD. I'm calling to support a specific bond commitment to fund the purchase and installation of cameras in all eligible special education settings. Here is why this funding is personally important to me. The motto at our South Austin Elementary School is "It's a great place for kids," but unfortunately, it was not a great place for my son. He was physically restrained twice on his second day of fourth grade. I believe that my son was wrongfully restrained and that his case manager was in violation of the Texas Restraint Code. Key events preceding his restraints occurred in a room with no witnesses. This treatment and restraints of my son have had a lasting impact on our family. The $1.2 million is the only designated sped expenditure that the Bond Committee recommended. Recently, the camera-specific funding was moved to an undesignated sped fund, which means that although the money could be used to fund cameras if parents request them, funding is not specifically carved out for the cameras. This initiative not only protects students, but it protects teachers as well. These cameras will be used and footage made available when there is an incident of alleged abuse or neglect. This is particularly important for students who are unable to report incidents and advocate for themselves. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Allison Sullivan. I am a parent of a student that attends Austin Independent School District here in Austin, Texas. I'm calling in regards to the bond proposal. I have been a longtime Austinite. I just want to comment and let you guys know, you really, really should take into consideration that you are sending a message that the kids on the east side of I-35 do not matter by proposing and passing this bond. It is unjust, no equity. Again, you're just letting them know, hey, guess what? You don't matter, they do. Thank you.
This is Sharon Vane. I'm the parent of a Bowie High School student and a 2022 AISD graduate. I'm calling on Item 4.1, and I want to urge you to adopt the Bond Steering Committee's $2.25 billion original proposal and not the updated proposal that was presented at Tuesday's Work Session. You have the opportunity tonight to show our district families that we care about all of our students and forge a courageous new path for our district. Please don't undercut that with last-minute changes that shift money from schools that serve mostly Black and Brown students and give it to schools that serve mostly white students. The original proposal already has money for nearly all schools, as well as funds allocated specifically for special education cameras, and was the product of the district's own equity-by-design process. Let's take a step into a brighter future and show that this time, the process and the results really are a new direction. Thank you.
Hello, President Rodriguez, Trustees, and Superintendent Mayes. I am Roxanne Evans, a longtime District 1 resident and AISD partner. As a former tri-chair of the AISD Facilities and Bond Planning Advisor Committee, I know the hard work, long hours, and difficult conversations that the Long Range Planning Committee and Bond Oversight Bond Steering Committee had for more than a year that have resulted in the bond proposals before you. I ask you to honor them and their work by approving the community proposal. I know that in the times we live in, it is often easy to let the word politics of difference play an outsized role in decisions related to resources. I hope as Board members, you're all able to do what is right for those who've had too few advocates in the past. I hope that you can understand that these bond proposals have the potential to elevate the entire district and that you do the right thing for the right reasons for all of our children. Thank you.
Hey, my name is KB Brookins, and I am a community member. The issue that I'm talking about is Austin ISD's bond proposal. Austin ISD and the Board gave the Bond Steering Committee a task to use the equity-by-design framework, and they completed it. And this recommended proposal moves the district in the right direction, and I want to see that proposal approved by the Board. We've noticed several recommendations that remove proposed funding from schools like LBJ High School and Oak Springs Elementary. And when Austin ISD fulfills its commitment to Black students in academics and facilities, then we know that it's fulfilled its commitment to all students. I feel that the Board has the opportunity to do something good and right. We should not continue to appease those who want to maintain the status quo. Right? So I voice my support for this. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Spears, and this is in reference to the new proposed 2022 updated bond. I do have children in the public school system in Austin at, I'm sorry, when, and I also have one attending early college high school. This bond is the reason why I always chose to keep my children in charter school. This bond represents a clear divide in the Austin Independent School District. Please, please rethink your decision for voting for it. It is not right, it is not fair, but this exact reason is the reason why I have kept my children out of the public school system and probably will be putting them back into the charter school system for this bond created just like this. Thank you.
Nadia Khan, parent and BSD member, calling about the bond package. The community has worked tirelessly for many months to bring forth a bond package that is not like the others, built on equity by design to ensure equally high outcomes for students and remove the predictability of success or failure that currently does correlate with social or cultural factors. We have many old and failing buildings, some of which students and communities thrive in despite the state they are in, while others not so much. Well-maintained facilities is a condition of student success and is particularly important for our more vulnerable students. A modernized facility has greater positive impact in vulnerable communities for a host of reasons: increased student attendance, enrollment, teacher retention, student morale, community involvement, and the sense of belonging, safety, and security that many students do not get in their home lives. With that in mind, and that needs are great everywhere, know that the Bond Steering Committee has proposed a balanced package that addresses all campuses' needs. All critical deficiencies are covered district-wide, and we are investing in the communities that need our greatest support to reach equally high outcomes for students. This has been very hard work. Please have courage to carry it through. Thank you.
Buenos dias y buenas noches. Mi nombre es John McKernan Gonzalez. Soy residente del Distrito 2 y pago impuestos y tengo familia en las escuelas de Austin. Quiero apoyar a Bond Proposal 2 por, como yo diría, a penny for your kids. Se me hace que vivimos en la ciudad más desigual racialmente y más segregada racialmente y por sueldo en Texas y casi casi en el país. Y hay que reconocer esto e invertir en las escuelas públicas. Se me hace que esta inversión histórica a la gente más afectada por esas desigualdades es muy importante. Si significa también invertir en escuelas como Crockett or Austin High para poder pasar esa propuesta, hay que ponerlo porque un centavo para nuestros niños, un centavo para nuestras niñas, vale la pena. Y hay que tenerlo en el proceso y todo el trabajo muy detallado de tratar de marcar las desigualdades por el proceso designed by equity. Por eso, muchas gracias. Y por favor, voten para el mayor apoyo a nuestros clientes, que también es un apoyo a nuestras comunidades y también es un apoyo para el futuro que vamos a estar. No hay que hacer esto a medias y hay que hacerlo de manera más...
This is an interpretation into English of John McKernan Gonzalez's message. Good morning and good evening. My name is John McKernan Gonzalez. I am a resident in District 2, and I pay taxes and have family in Austin schools. I want to support Bond Proposal 2, or, as I would say it, "A Penny for Your Kids." I think we live in the most racially inequitable and racially segregated city, as well as by salary, in Texas and almost in the country. And we must recognize this and invest in public schools. I think that historical investment for those most affected by inequities is very important. If it means to also invest in schools like Crockett or Austin High in order to pass the proposal, we must do it, because a penny for our boys, a penny for our girls, is worth it. We have to have faith in the process and very detailed work, and to try to point out the inequities through the design-by-equity process. For this, thank you very much, and please vote for the greatest support for our students, which is also support for our communities, and it is also supporting the future we will live in. We must not do this halfway. It must be done in a more...
My name is Josh Jackson, and I am an AISD parent, as well as the vice president of the Travis High School Band Booster. And I just want to voice my opinion in regards to the current bond and the full rebuild for Travis High School, and how it is essential in order to show the community, as well as the students, that they have people there supporting them, and to continue furthering their education and have the same opportunities as those other schools that have more money coming in on a regular basis. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Carreño, calling in support of Bond Proposal B to include the full rebuild of Travis Early College High School. Where the school is located, the community is being rebuilt, businesses are being, new businesses are being built. Travis campus was built in 1953, and it's one of the oldest schools in the city. A brand-new, fully remodeled campus is a necessity for students, teachers, and staff for not only a new HVAC system, more classrooms, but also for better technology and, more importantly, better security, especially during these hard times. Travis is an early college high school. Not only would the campus be inviting, but what the school does and offers is a great opportunity to have more students, continue to further their education and enrolling in the campus. Students, teachers, and staff deserve a better Travis. This school deserves the same opportunities as any other schools that receive more money, all because they're in a better area in the city.
Hi, my name is Kynan Murtaugh, and I'm a member of the Travis Vertical Team because I work at Travis High School. I'm calling to comment on Agenda Item 4.1. I encourage the Board to either follow, one, the Bond Steering Recommendations, Bond Package B, or Bond Package B with the amendments presented by seven of the Bond Steering Committee members at the Board Work Session on Tuesday. These amendments take trustee feedback, but still keep Travis at full size and single phase, and will also provide long-needed support to Northeast and LBJ High Schools. It's absolutely unacceptable to take money from historically marginalized and underserved communities in order to provide more funding for affluent schools in Northwest Austin. To do so, be historically ignorant, massively irresponsible, and continue the decades of harm done to our community. Travis was built in 1953 and adopted Confederate mascot the year before Emmett Till was lynched. We need to break from that legacy on purpose now. Thanks very much for your time.
Sarah Martinez, Travis High School Band Booster, Bond Proposal. Good afternoon. I'm calling to state that I support the Band Proposal B to include the full rebuild of Travis High School. Travis High School is the oldest high school in South Austin and is in critical need to have an updated facility. Please consider keeping this total rebuild of Travis High School on the bond proposal. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Andrew Gonzalez. I'm a former teacher at Travis High School. I'm calling to provide comment on the Bond Proposal, Agenda Item 4.1. I encourage the Board to either follow the Bond Steering Committee recommendations in the form of Bond Package B, or Bond Package B with the amendments presented by the members of the Bond Steering Committee at the Board Work Session on Tuesday. These amendments incorporate feedback, but still keep Travis High School at full size and single phase, and will also provide long-needed support to Northeast Early College High School and LBJ High School. Having worked for years at Travis High School, I believe it is unacceptable to take money from not only that school community, but also other historically underserved communities and redistribute those dollars in such an inequitable fashion. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Barra. I am a parent of an AISD student. I'm a former educator from the district and mentor, and a current PhD student in bilingual education. I am calling in response to Trustee Foster's current comments on the recent bond proposal that is up for vote tonight, and also in response to comments on the dialogue that has been happening. And I really think if there's a possibility to hold off on voting on the bond proposal, that is something that you all should consider, because, as Mr. Foster stated, the equity issue and moving money from Black and Brown schools in Austin ISD is very, very problematic and very concerning when we look at the history of the district and the city in and of itself, and the research that shows us how facilities, how the environment, the school dynamics, what the actual facilities and buildings look like, can foster a sense of either belonging, inclusion, care, safety, welcomeness. Just seeing the facilities. Having been a teacher that worked in AISD on the east side and had to take my fifth grade students to different middle schools, west side and east side, they saw the inequities. I could see the inequities. There needs to be more investment on the... As I was saying, they were able to see the inequities, and there definitely needs to be more dialogue to see if there is another way that we can keep some of those funds in the east...
Hi, my name's Orlando Carreño. I am a Travis High School alumni, and I am currently the Band Booster President for Travis. I'm calling in support of the Bond Proposal B with the full rebuild of Travis High School. As you know, Travis High School was built in 1953 and is in need of an update and an energy-efficient campus. Please consider keeping the total rebuild of Travis High School on the bond proposal. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Lauren Garrett, and I'm a community member, giving testimony for Item 4.1. It's important for me to show my support for equitable funding for school facility improvement to serve Black students in particular, to improve academic outcome. When Austin ISD fulfills its commitment to Black students and academics and facilities, then we know it's fulfilled its commitment to all students. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Contreras. I'm a teacher at Travis Early College High School, and I'm speaking on 4.1, the adoption of the bond this evening. I'm a teacher who's been teaching here at Travis for 18 years. I want to express support for the Board to recommend the Bond recommendation of Bond Package B. The Long Range Planning Committee and the Bond Committee have worked thousands of hours, nights, and weekends to put this package together using the equity by design. Travis Early College High School allotment for a full modernization started from around $280 to $275 million has now shrunk to its current cost of $251 million. I hope the entire Board will support Travis High School as a full modernization and end the decrease in cost of a full modernization for Travis High School. Chief Officer has done a superb job of funding more funds to support more schools. The concern of the diminishing cost of Travis school modernization is the quality of the building would suffer from the low cost of diminishing cost of the building. Please support bond package put forth by the Bond Steering Committee.
Trustees, this concludes public testimony. Are there any questions or clarifications?
Please support Bond Package put forth by the Bond Steering Committee.
Trustees, this concludes public testimony. Are there any questions or clarifications? If not, trustees, thank you. As a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd. So now we will move to the action item on the agenda. Dr. Mays, would you introduce our item this evening?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Tonight is the culmination of more than 15 months of work with over 100 community members working collaboratively with the district to develop the most innovative and equitable bond in AISD's history. That included community engagement, opportunities, and conversations, equity training, and lots of courageous conversations and thousands of hours in time. All of this has been done in pursuit of educational equity to ensure every child receives what is needed to develop their full potential. What is exciting about this proposal is that it represents the biggest investment in students and historically underserved communities and in Title I schools while providing a benefit to every campus in our district. Our goal is to be the highest-paying school district in Central Texas, and in order to accomplish this, we must reduce the burden of aging facilities on our general operating budget. This bond is about new and modernized schools. It's about safety and security. It's about new technology. It's about providing the best that we can for our students. We built on the Bond Steering Committee's proposals that were designed with equity at their core. We listened to our trustees and to our community that more needed to be done to complement the extraordinary work of the Bond Steering Committee. At President Rodriguez's request, we were able to explore refined debt management strategies that have allowed us to increase our capacity within the one-cent increase. This has allowed us to not only honor the BSC's recommendation but to also include the investments recommended by the administration. I could never say thank you enough to everyone for their work and commitment. I'm proud of the work that we did together to get to this point. This bond solidifies Austin's commitment to education and to Austin ISD students so that we can prepare every student with the knowledge and skills to thrive in college, career, and life. And so with that being said, I do want to turn it over to our team to present a few of the challenges. Again, we thank everybody for their time and commitment to this work.
Interim Superintendent Dr. Mays, President Rodriguez, Board of Trustees. My name is Matias Segura. I'm the Chief of Operations, the proud Chief of Operations here at AISD, and I'm very proud to bring to you all today an updated recommendation from the administration. The first thing I want to point out, as Dr. Mays said, is that, as you can see on Slide 2, is the refined proposal does build upon the Bond Steering Committee Plan B. It includes the full allocation for LBJ at $115.6 million, full allocation for Northeast at $116 million, as well as the full modernization of Burnett Middle School at $157 million. I also want to point out that through this process, we learned a lot from our trustees. We learned a lot from our community, and we have found that there are significant opportunities. And $189 million were identified by Mr. Ramos in our finance department to help fund those projects. In total, the revised proposal is $2.44 billion and will include, as said previously, a one-cent tax rate increase. Mr. Ramos?
So that was step one, as far as what was going to be the total bond package. So that's where the $2.44 billion came from. The next step, as trustee President Rodriguez instructed, was look at our overall debt portfolio. And so we were able to really restructure our debt. We are planning to use a portion of our fund balance, still within local policy, to pay off debt early this current school year, $27 million, as well as next school year, $18 million. And by doing so, we were able to increase our total debt capacity of our portfolio, which would enable us to afford the $2.44 billion bond package and still keep that one penny increase on the debt service side.
So as we've talked about before, you know, there were priorities. There are pillars of this bond program, and really at the highest priority is safety. And what you'll see within this bond program is a significant investment in safety, not only in security vestibules or locks or fencing, or that prioritized deficiencies around life safety and security were included across all campuses, but that these modernized facilities will be brought up to our standards so that all of our students and staff feel safe and are safe. It was founded on equity, who went through a comprehensive equity process many times. It was challenging, two steps forward, one step backward, but I can tell you with certainty that this bond program would not be as strong as it is if we hadn't gone through that work. And I think that the organization will be positioned very well for many years to come. We think about AISD's commitment to being the highest-paid, highest-paying district in Central Texas, and I often think about the burden that our general operating budget endures by our aging facilities. It is significant, and those dollars matter. If we can remove them from the general operating budget, we can push those dollars towards programming and teacher salaries, which is where it belongs, where it's always should have, where it's always belonged and where it always should be. And lastly, every student will see an improvement in their experience within our arms through this investment, and I couldn't be more proud of that fact. Some of the items included in the revised proposal include, in total, $218 billion, $2.18 billion going directly to campuses, certainly a unique opportunity in investing more in Clifton, the CTE program, additional modernizations, phased modernizations at five high schools. We were also to hear the need to really begin the planning effort around significant growth that's occurring in Southeast Austin, who identified opportunities to fund important studies that will help us position our organization as we move forward, as well as identify investments in some of those schools that have been problematic for us operationally. And as we move forward, we'll talk about the tax rate impact.
So when talking about the tax rate impact, let's look at our tax rate history. So we do know that the district's proposed tax rate, which currently will be 99.66 cents, that will be the lowest tax rate in Austin ISD actually in the past 21 years. And so in September, our school board will vote on a proposed tax rate of 99.66 cents, again, the lowest tax rate that we have had in this district in over 21 years. We also know that that proposed tax rate will be a total tax rate reduction of 6.5 cents this current school year. If this bond were to pass, you have heard that it would be a one penny increase to the debt service tax rate side, but we are still projecting a total tax rate reduction next year of 3 cents. So over the next two years, Austin ISD will be reducing our overall total tax rate by 9.5 cents. And then finally, when you compare Austin ISD's tax rate with the tax rates in the Central Texas area, we will have the lowest tax rate in Central Texas this school year, and we are projecting to, even if this bond passes, have the lowest tax rate in Central Texas next school year as well.
So with a bond program like this comes great responsibility to our students, to our staff, and to our community, and there are commitments that we have as an organization that we must deliver on. First and foremost is green infrastructure, and I do want to point out that this has been a cultural priority for our organization for quite some time, and we will continue to implement that within the 2022 bond program. One important kind of fact to note here is that, you know, currently we have 48 green buildings, and every building within the 2017 bond program has been brought up and was included, if they were modernized, as part of our LEED or Austin Energy, or Austin Energy Green Building requirements. As you know, electric buses is a topic in our endeavor to continue to increase our, reduce our footprint within our community. We have already begun piloting programs at our terminals, and you have a commitment from us as an organization to pursue all opportunities to partner with the state or the federal government to purchase electric buses and implement them within our fleet. Workers protections. My dad was a plumber. I worked in this field for a very long time. It is near and dear to all of our hearts. It is something that we take very seriously. You also have a commitment from our organization to ensure worker protections. There are great programs, including several that have been presented to us. We're very confident that we can bring back a commitment that truly details out what that looks like over the implementation of the bond program. And then lastly, our continued commitment to the historically underutilized businesses within our community. This program will be implemented with that hub program, which is overseen by Ed Ramos, our CFO, and we're excited about all the great opportunities that our partners will have and the work that will be created and the opportunities that will be created as these projects get implemented over the next several years. And so with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions and turn it over back to Dr. Mays.
So again, I do want to thank our BSC, our Long Range Planning Team, as well as the administrative team, and our board members. Again, without this robust process, we would not be able to get here. So again, thank you, Trustee Rodriguez, for supporting us with this recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Mays. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Matias, and the entire team. I want to recognize trustee Foster to make a motion.
So first of all, thank you to all, Dr. Mays, Mr. Segura. So we have our leadership, Mr. Segura. We have facilities, Mr. Ramos, finance, Dr. Hawley, equity, and many, many more folks who have worked very hard from the, our staff and leadership side. So thank you all for the, I guess, re-re revised presentation and recommendation. It may come as a surprise to some, but it is absolutely responsive to conversations and hard work in the last 48 hours that I am about to move, that we recommend, that we approve the recommendation that's come before us tonight. Before doing that, I want to make a couple of points, and I understand that we'll engage discussion, which we need to do. The first point is that the recommendation that has come to us tonight honors the hard work of the Bond Steering Committee. Equity by design is absolutely one of my favorite phrases now that was, is sort of new to me. That was a beautiful charge, and it was lived into with great integrity by citizens from across the city. I am so in awe and honor of the work that this diverse cross-section of our city did, and the recommendation that you've presented tonight lives into, fully lives into, to their work and fully honors their work. The recommendation presented to us, secondly, powerfully benefits the entire Austin community. All of our students deserve the best that we can do. The bulk of funds in this package go to schools in historically underserved communities overwhelmingly. I haven't been able to see bond packages across the land, but I am willing to bet that you will never see, or you have not seen, such an equity-forward effort, where the overwhelming majority of our funds go to Title I schools, go absolutely to the spaces where we have done the worst job in the past. At the same time, that does not mean that folks at Bowie should be dealing with air conditioning that isn't there, or that another school should not be able to use their locker rooms at all, or another facility, every time there is one of our torrential rains, a wing of the school basically is not functional until they go through their ritual of pulling out all the machines that they have now gotten used to pulling out, to dry everything out again and make the space habitable. That's not acceptable either for any of our kids. So what has come before us, to be clear, is the Bond Steering Committee's larger recommendation and then the addition of some of these other projects that were previously unfunded. The critical piece for me was that as we add, we don't do a bait and switch and we don't take from Black and Brown to go to majority white. And by the way, when I say majority white, we're talking about schools 52% Anglo, 54% Anglo. We're not talking about 90%, although there are some of those as well. But our best that we can do is actually to facilitate an integration that we haven't quite realized. And so when I talk about majority white schools, I'm talking about schools that also serve a broad community. This recommendation does not take from one community to give to another. The last point I want to raise really quickly as part of or before this motion is to say that there is an invisible group that we talk about a lot in other contexts, but we haven't talked a lot about in this context, and that is our teachers. And the reality is, is that we have a nationwide teacher shortage, and we have a teacher shortage in the state as well. And what our teachers are learning, or what our teachers understand, is that they can work elsewhere. They can do other things. Their skills are transferable. If you can manage some of our, you know, if you can manage a classroom of middle schoolers, you probably are pretty good in terms of skills that can transfer to other arenas. So we risk losing our teachers because we haven't historically treated them well enough. When we upgrade facilities, when you actually provide air conditioning, when you actually have great modern facilities that allows a teacher to live into their best selves as a teacher, you are raising their quality of professional life. So this bond package is also for our teachers, and it's for anyone who is working so hard in our buildings. So as a result of the months and months of work of the Bond Steering Committee in partnership with the administration, as a result of the most recent revisions to the recommendation, I am in a position to vigorously support this bond. So President Rodriguez, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt an order calling a bond election on the uniform election date in November 2022 to obtain authorization from voters to issue unlimited tax bonds to finance improvements that follow the Bond Steering Committee recommendation and aligns additional facility needs, which total $2,439 million.
I heartily second.
Thank you very much, trustee Foster, with a second from trustee Wagner. I will say, trustee Foster, just two things. One, I appreciate your comments as we have 88 days, 2,117 hours, and 127,027 minutes before the November election. And before I turn it over to our trustees to speak on the motion in hand, I just want to reiterate one particular point, I think, that Mr. Matias and Dr. Mays have made. We want to make it clear because I think we're going to, we're going to have this vote on the motion. So Austin ISD has a strong history of supporting worker and environmental protections in our bond programs. And without objection from the board, we're going to consider and bring back to the board potential commitments, specific ones that were not placed on the agenda. So those include things like the Build Better Program or something similar, the green building standards, the continuation of electric buses that Mr. Matias mentioned, and a full hub inclusion for the 2022 bond program. So I don't want anyone to think that we're done with just this one vote. And the Governance Committee is going to discern the appropriate district participation and report back to the full board at a future meeting on the next steps, potential actions, and commitments. I wanted to make sure upfront that we were clear about that as we vote tonight. So as we've done before, we have had folks kind of provide feedback and comments. So we have a motion on the floor by trustee Foster and a second by trustee Wagner to approve the adoption of an order calling a 2022 bond election. And I want to ask for comments, and trustees, if you just, if we just want to go down the line again, if you don't mind, and if you want to pass, I'm happy to go back to you. But I'd like to recognize trustee Ashy. As I would count trustee Foster's comments on the motion as his first comments.
This is the only time I don't like being on the end of the dais like this. I don't always like going first. Maybe you should start... Maybe you should start in the middle, President Rodriguez, we do that every now and then. First, I would like to say thank you. Thank you to everyone who's worked on this. There's been so much that we have to benefit from as a community and as a school district, and I'm so grateful. There are amazing things, and I'm going to take a minute, and I hope I don't embarrass Chief Segura, when I say I'm excited for when we pass this bond, because I know it is in very capable hands as far as the management and how quickly we will be able to get these projects on the building and on the ground for our students to use, because I've seen you do it. And I'm excited for that opportunity. I can't wait to see the new buildings. I can't wait to see all of our high schools, all of our high schools with turf and lights. I can't wait to be able to have our kids feel proud of the buildings that they walk in, and they so deserve to feel that. And I'm excited to support this bond. I very much appreciate, I appreciate your words, Trustee Foster, and the recognition that there are needs all over the district. And reiterate again, for those schools that didn't make the cut, because we do still have some schools that didn't make the cut, and I really appreciate your commitment last night, both yours, Chief Segura, and interim Superintendent Mays, to take the time with those schools to help them understand how we will support them and how we will be able to manage through the challenges we know our older buildings have. And I am looking forward to being able to go out to the community and support and champion what we know already exists, because we have examples. We have beautiful schools like Go Valley and Menchaca and DOS, and we have Eastside, which is just, I could sit on the top floor of that building every day and look out at that incredible, at our incredible city. And I can't wait, and I'm excited to support it. Thank you for what I feel like is a proposal that allows everyone to feel heard.
Thank you, Trustee Anderson.
Usually, I'm pretty good at writing stuff off the cuff, but I never thought, I've been in Austin all my life, I have never seen AISD bring forward such an equity-focused bond. I never thought I would see that. So that's, I'm pretty speechless, but thank you to the Bond Steering Committee. Like, I know, spending all that time, those weekends, it wasn't easy, but the results got us here, and I really am grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Anderson. Trustee Wagner?
I also sit before you tonight in awe and gratitude by what our community representatives, our teams here at AISD have been able to accomplish. This is a monumental challenge to bring this forward, to slice and dice and cut it so many different ways to try and get it right. And what I see before me is something that is not a bond that is just about the children of today. This is a bond that is about the future of our city, that is about where generations of children will walk into school buildings and feel proud and connected to the school environments that they are in, will be excited to be in those schools. Our staff will have adequate buildings that they don't have to constantly rig up to make work for their teaching needs and instead can focus on educating our children. I recognize that the amount of this bond is significant. When we came before voters in 2017 asking for $1.05 billion, that was the largest amount we had ever asked for, and we sit before you here asking for double that. But I hope that the voters of Austin will recognize the power that this has to transform our district, not only for today, but for many, many years to come. And I also sit before you here today saying that I have an incredibly high degree of confidence in the teams of our district to be able to deliver this bond in an exceptional way. And that is very much because I have seen them do this work already. The work that was delivered in five years with the 17-bond is phenomenal. And if you have an opportunity to walk into any of the buildings from the 17-bond, it's hard for me to walk in those buildings without bursting into tears, because it is so incredible to see what those aspects of our voters' commitment brought to those schools. And here we have an opportunity to do that for so many of the other campuses that have stood in need for decades. I also want to be sure that when voters in my district or any of the districts west of Lamar in Austin look at this bond and say, why, why are we pursuing such a heavy weighting of projects in the Eastern Crescent? Why are we not treating our district equally and having equal proportions of bonds in every district? Because District 7 will not have the lion's share. It in fact has the smallest share. But that is because we are all one larger community, and when our entire district wins, every child in this district wins. We all share the same MNO budget, we share the same needs, we share the same larger aspects of concern as a district, and it's important that we help those among us who have not been served in the way that they should have for decades in this district. So I hope that our community will rally together and understand why that is so vitally important for our city and our future. And I encourage folks to get to know this bond, to get to know these schools, because we have so much need in this district, and we have such a tremendous opportunity in front of us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wagner. Trustee Singh?
Thank you all. I really appreciated hearing the connection to teachers. Thank you. I think for some people, talking about, you know, HVAC systems and gym floors is not the sexiest or most exciting topic, but I think everyone can get excited about having more money to pay our teachers. This bond is going to help us do that. This bond is going to help us perhaps increase salaries for school counselors, because we're having a really hard time right now recruiting people to provide mental health services to our students. I looked at you, Letitia. You know, this is going to help us bring really innovative curriculum to our students. We have set really, really high standards in our scorecard, you know, for academic achievement for all of our students, for post-secondary attainment. This bond is going to help us get there. So if you don't care about gym floors or, you know, school bus seat belts, hopefully you'll care about those things, because that's primarily why I'm voting for this bond and probably why many of us are, because ultimately it's going to help our students in many ways. I do have a question. Sorry, y'all. I just want to, because I know one, the question I'm getting the most from people is, how much is this going to raise our taxes? And I know, Chief Ramos, you've already explained that, but can you just give me a really simple answer? So for a $600,000 house, which is about the average, I think, for Austin right now, how much more are they going to have to pay a year?
So using the simplest calculation, that would be $60? Mike Lee? I'm sorry. So using the simplest calculation, that would be $60 per year.
Okay.
And that's not factoring in the $40,000 homestead exemption.
Okay. So y'all heard it here. For the price of a cup of coffee a month, we can get all of this for our students. So please consider that when you go to the polls in November if this passes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Singh. Trustee Zapata?
I have a question also. What about if your houses were $250,000? How much do you pay then?
Actually, if you factor in the 10% cap on your taxable assessed value, the $40,000 homestead exemption, and the 6.5 cent decrease this school year, your taxes would actually probably be less than what you paid last year.
But you don't have a number, like?
So I have an example of an actual home in the Austin area. Last year, it was valued at $187,000. This year, that value increased to $312,000, and that home is paying about $80 less this year than they did last year in taxes.
$80 less?
$80 less.
Okay. So the other question for clarity, clarification is, I know I heard on Tuesday evening about building schools in phases. So does this bond, for the record, have only two phases for schools that are going to have to be in phase form for buildup?
Trustee Zapata, for middle schools, the goal is to have two phases. So we have, so for Martin, it would be one of two. That would be the goal. Again, a future discussion that to take place with the board. For O'Henry, the goal would be to have one of two. But this does include a full modernization for Burnett Middle School. So the goal is, for middle schools, ideally, two is the most we'd want to have. For high schools, due to complexity, we do have the full modernization of Travis Early College High School. LBJ Northeast Early College High School do have significant investments of over $100 million, which, based on, at this point, would require probably only one more phase, but it would require one more phase.
Okay.
For Crockett, for instance, it might require two others, just because it's a smaller amount. But our goal, and we've had a lot of conversations with this, you know, we don't want our school communities to be under construction for decades.
Right.
But we also acknowledge that these are expensive projects. And so we just have to really think about, you know, when we take a bite at the apple at each one of these campuses, do we take enough of a bite to where the next one can be tolerated and manageable, and so that it doesn't go on for decades? So that's how this has been structured.
Okay. And I'm sorry if I didn't, I didn't catch it, but I think I heard you say Travis is going to be at one phase?
That's exactly right. All at one time.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I am honored to serve with a group of trustees. We come from all walks of life, many different experiences, and truly respect each other in our, in what we say and do. But at the same time, at the end of the day, we want the best for every child in AISD. And so we have to compromise. And this proposal is, I am so happy that all of what our bond committee has recommended is intact. So that was one of our speakers says, keep it intact. It's there. Thank you for that. Also, that it is equity by design, and I think it's on us. It's on us to ensure, you know, we asked the committee to work with our equity department to make sure that we had the best equity by design proposals, and they did that work. And we need to be held accountable to respect that work. So I appreciate that this bond is going to include everything, all the hard work and thinking and going back and making revisions and having those tough conversations. Thank you to the steering committee, and I'm glad that you all are willing to continue to oversee this development as we begin construction. And thank you, Chief Mathias, and Chief Ramos, and Dr. Hawley, and Dr. Mays, all of you for your patience and understanding and taking the hits, because after all of that, look where we are. We are at a place where we can all come together, and I'm ready to celebrate tomorrow, tonight. So I too support the new proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zapata. Trustee Lugo?
Please, Dr. Lee.
Okay, great. So we'll pass and come back to you, Trustee Boswell.
Thank you. I want to share thanks to every single person who has had a role in shaping this. You know, the committees, Long Range Planning Committee, the Bond Steering Committee, everyone who shared their lived experience as part of that process, every staff member who has touched this, every one of my colleagues here. This has been a massive community effort, and it shows, and I appreciate that. I also want to talk about the work to come. I want to thank everybody ahead of time for what is still to come. The vote we take tonight is a beginning, not an end. We are at the beginning of something brand new that is just as important as the work that has come so far. None of this matters unless we get this across the finish line with our voters, and I know that people are ready to get to work to make that happen. And I thank you all ahead of time for that and pledge to be beside you to do that work as we do that. I also want to talk about these fabulous buildings that we have and remind us and challenge us to remember that what happens in those buildings is just as important as the buildings themselves, and that we need the same kind of deep community work always within each campus community to share decision-making, to be sure we're supporting our children, every student academically, emotionally, as a whole person, to be, make sure we're supporting the families, and make sure we're inviting our community to be part of our schools with us, not just when they vote, but all the time, that these are our shared schools. This is the future of the city we share, and that we need to keep that in mind, that what happens after construction is just as important as where our students are. And I know we're on that journey, and it's a long one and an important one. And then finally, I want to say, just remind us, that we live in a state that has chosen to chronically underfund our public schools. We live in a state that has chosen to be in the bottom 10 states in per-student funding. And this bond is an opportunity to show that we live in a city that doesn't agree with that. We live in a city that values education. We live in a city that wants something different, that knows our students. Every student deserves more than that, and this is a chance for our city to speak up with it. And I want to thank the committee, my colleagues, the administration, for being brave and ambitious and saying, we can think big about this. We know what Austin is capable of. We know the love for our district that's reflected in this. We love our schools, we love our students, we love our teachers, and this is a way to really make an action, take an action, and make sure that we're doing all that we can to be the city that we need to be, to give our schools, our kids, the schools that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Boswell. Trustee Lugo, are you ready? Or I'm happy to go if you're, you're going to go after me? Okay. I have a couple of comments. I think, one, just to build off on what Trustee Boswell said, 100% of the monies from the bond will stay here locally. And it's just, that is just so important, because I think one of the things that I see in this whole process is that we are investing in ourselves. And I just want to take a pause for a second, because I think it's important for us to remember that we have a $1.8 billion budget that we just passed, the balanced budget, where we're paying to the state $845 million, as I look at Mr. Ramos to make sure he's correcting me right, $845 million to the state. And tonight, we'll be investing in ourselves, in our community, for $2.44 billion. That speaks volumes about the idea that we believe in academic achievement and equity and the audacity to believe that that can happen right here in Austin, Texas. I also want to say that everyone, I hope everyone feels like we've won tonight, but I have a sense of urgency in the fact that I reminded Trustee Foster that we have 88 days left to remind and educate our community and our voters that this is the right thing to do. This bond package would free up millions of dollars in maintenance that could allow us to raise pay for teachers all over town and everybody. us to raise pay for teachers all over town. And everybody wants that. Everybody benefits when we can pay teachers more because it helps us attract and retain our teachers. And the example that has been brought up before, but it bears repeating, is the 1.7 million dollars spent for portable HVACs that could have been used for 25, to hire 25 teachers. We all win when we are a more equitable society and this bond promises more investments in Title I schools than has ever been proposed in the 140-year-long history of this school district. But equity doesn't mean only helping some kids. As Dr. Holly, our equity officer, has reminded us, equity means every child gets what they need to thrive. And our mission is to help every child, every day. And this bond does that perhaps in no ways more important than the next two win-wins, which are safety and prosperity. Every child, regardless of their circumstances, skin color, or any other factor, deserves to feel safe at school. Not just to be safe, but feel safe. That's something every family is taking from this bond. And every family also benefits from this bond creating new pathways to prosperity for kids who are from communities who have historically missed out on these opportunities. So think about this. We know we have good jobs here. We know we have talented kids, but the kids don't have the skills and education for these great jobs. So what happens? We've got thousands of these kids that don't reach their full potential and our roads are clogged with people with license plates from other states other than Texas who are driving up our housing prices. And this bond will help disrupt that system in a way that benefits all of us. So lastly, it's been said that a rising tide lifts all boats, but here in Austin, what we've seen, and this is not true, that's because some of those boats have anchors, some of them have holes. And so when the tide rises, some communities, communities get washed away, or in some cases get frozen. This bond truly lifts all boats and will make our community stronger for generations to come. Trustee Lugo?
Yeah, thank you. So I want to make three points. The first is, so this bond is not just about our school district. It's not just about one particular campus or one part of Austin. For me, I really see this not just as multi-generational, which it is, but it also speaks to how Texas has chosen to not fund public education, just as trustee Boswell and so many others on the dais have mentioned. Now, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, the average November voter probably isn't going to be an expert in public education finance, right? They're not. But I do, I do believe that many Austinites will still believe strongly enough to invest in public education and that, once again, our city, our voters will take a great leap of faith and entrust our board and our administration with bond dollars to invest in our students and our teachers and our campuses. What I don't know is how many of those Austinites might carry that same commitment to the Capitol in the coming legislative session in 2023 to advocate for a school funding system that allows local school districts to invest in their students, teachers, and ultimately our communities, which I think we're hearing a lot of that same sentiment tonight. So why do I bring that up? Well, because even though we're passing this historic bond that was grounded in a first-of-its-kind equity by design, school districts wouldn't be put in this position where we have to ask, can we please use bond dollars to fix our broken facilities, our unmaintained facilities? Because the only way we can actually compensate our staff and teachers is if we do this bond. I'll let folks sit with that. My second point is, teachers, like so many professionals who dedicate their lives to serving others, are not just in that field for pay. Although in this economy, higher compensation is not a luxury, it's absolutely essential to attract and retain staff and teachers. But I ask of my colleagues and of myself and of the interim superintendent that we challenge ourselves to work closely with teachers and staff, with labor advocates, to establish a work environment that honors the voice of those who are impacted by decisions made by or made at headquarters. People don't leave their profession. They don't leave their job if they feel valued, heard, empowered. People leave bosses. That's research-based. That's not my opinion. That's fact. So we have to do better. Our students are counting on us. My third point is, the board's passage of this motion to call a bond election is worthy of celebration. I'm going to take a tiny little poop on it though, because it's not the end. Even voting in November is not the end. You see, maybe, maybe y'all don't see because I'm short. So you'll see, I'm wearing my P shirt, Bobcats Forever. So in 2017, my eldest was in his first year of kinder, his first year of public school. And this bond, you know, the, there was a billion-dollar bond. My, at that time, husband and I thought, oh my gosh, yeah, right? Like, we should invest in school. This makes so much sense. Like, why would anybody not be for this bond? Well, so we ate our words later. So I have zero desire to be part of repeating that history. And the administration and my colleagues on the board have heard me say time and time again, like, we have to learn from our mistakes. We cannot afford to keep repeating history and expect a different outcome. So for me, to honor the hours of blood, sweat, and tears that the long-range planning committee members, the bond steering committee members, the administration have devoted to designing a bond that aims to make a small but significant step towards a more equitable school district. To honor those efforts, I ask that my colleagues, that we look closely at the bylaws and policies that guide the work of the community bond oversight committee, to strengthen their ability to closely look at all of the information, not just pamphlets that look beautiful and have these wonderful photos and kind of like a high-level description of what's happened with bond money. But get in there, like dig into the information, dig into the finance. Where did those dollars go? Which schools were invested? That is the role they should play. And I've been on this board, thank you voters for allowing me this honor. And not once have I seen the CBOC come to a public board meeting to present to us. That's on us. So again, I ask that my colleagues look at the bylaws and policies for the community bond oversight committee, the CBOC, because without oversight, how can any, how can any one of us promise accountability? We have to follow through on equity by design by following through on the bond package as it will be passed.
Thank you trustee Lugo. If I do just one more round, trustee Foster, do you have any other comment? Trustee, trustee, trustee Zapata, any other additional? Okay. So, having a motion by trustee Foster and a second by trustee Yasme Wagner to approve an order calling a bond election on the uniform election date in November 2022 to obtain authorization from voters to issue unlimited tax bonds to finance improvements that follow the bond steering committee recommendation and align additional facility needs, which totals 2,439 million. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Singh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting or shall we continue?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee, having a motion by secretary Singh and a second by trustee Anderson with a close other second by trustee Zapata to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. The meeting is now adjourned at 7:26 PM. Thank you all.